Get started on the, on the work session and Jessica, it looks like you are first and second.
We will do them both at the same time.
That'll work for me.
Because they're together. So I'm here tonight with Bass Hampton. He is with Jesus Revolution, a film that we have a permit for here, a permit application for here in the city. They are working through their scheduling times right now. Number two, I think, if I'm not mistaken, is the request to walk on a resolution tonight, very specifically related to this film. They're asking for two specific things from the city. One is to utilize one of the K-1 classrooms for a particular scene that is going to be on or about Monday, March the 7th, somewhere thereabouts. Filming dates are still pretty fluid right now. And the second date is for the utilization of North Beach Park, specifically onto the sand at North Beach Park for another shot, somewhere again that week of Monday, March the 7th through the 10th, I think. So if you're okay with it, I'd love to ask Bass to come up and tell you a little bit about the film and what our requests are tonight.
Okay, sounds great.
Awesome, thank you.
Do you guys mind if I bring you?
No, please, please bring it.
So we created this, just to give you an idea, you've probably heard of the Irwin Brothers? They've done several movies.
Thank you, sir.
The front page is how it's done, is the, is our movie that we're doing now. The back page shows the movies these guys have already done. They're Alabama natives, John and Andy Irwin.
And all faith-based entertainment that these guys have been making over the years. I worked with them on Woodlawn in Birmingham in 2014, but they also did, I Still Believe Here a few years ago. This is a great faith-based story about a spiritual awakening in the 60s in Southern California, where a bunch of hippies decided to clean up their act and start going to church. And it's a true story about Greg Laurie. What we want to use North Beach for, and it's currently scheduled for March the 7th, is we have an old trailer, a camper-type trailer, that Greg Laurie, it's not the actual one, but it's very similar to one Greg Laurie, the focus of our story, and his mother lived in. They moved from New York to California. His mother was kind of a train wreck. Greg ended up cleaning up his life and founding the Calvary Church, and there's like 2,200 of those across the country right now. And we would like to, it's just one day, it's our first day of filming, but we would like to get permission to put this big beach trailer, it's about 20 feet long, pull it out there on the trailer. We could probably put it down on eight-by-four mud mats, these big, thick, heavy rubber mats, stick it on top of that, maybe throw some sand on top of it, and just do a scene, maybe put a green screen behind it, and we're going to pretend it's Southern California. That's one day of filming. There is a little night work in there, but I think we would be done before 11:00. At that time, we'll probably have enough hours at the end of the day, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, to get that stuff done. And then, the other thing we'd like to use in Fairhope is the K-1 Center. We want to use that as a military academy that Greg Laurie went to when he was young. And when you go into the, and I know there's some, some issues in that building, we're aware of that, and we're prepared to pay for any environmental testing if, if we could share with you if we needed to.
Okay, I think we've already got that, already handled.
Right. But we want to use one of the front two rooms just as a classroom, and that's not even a full day of filming. And then, we want to shoot the exterior to imply that it is this military school. We might want to put a sign up or something that, you know, has the fictitious name of the school. And then, one of the outbuildings, when you're looking at the K-1 Center off to the right, we may want to imply that that's the principal's office. And if we could have access to inside one of those rooms, we'd like to use it for that purpose.
Okay, do we need to coordinate with FIF?
We need to coordinate with FIF, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And so, those are the major things that we want to do here. There will be some stuff that we want to do, some driving scenes, but I think what we're looking at right now is off of Highway 13 out in the county, so I don't think we have anything really right downtown. We had been talking about using the, the boardwalk down there, the Fairhope Pier. I think we're moving that stuff to California. We got four days out in California to shoot.
Okay. Councilman, any, any questions, any comments?
The only thing I always ask is, when, when you leave, the next day, it looks just like you found...
I've been doing this since 1994, and that's how I operate everywhere I go.
Not a problem, just want to make sure we have that on the record.
Yeah.
Other than that, as long as it doesn't interfere with the city, I don't have a problem.
Councilman Robinson?
I don't.
Oh, sounds good to me. So you need us to...
You have to show us when we're going to see it. Do we get a sneak preview?
Well, we, absolutely. They may have some kind of premiere here. They like to do that in the place.
We've got a brand-new screen out there at the football park. We'd sure throw one out there.
All right. I'm sure they'd be entertaining something like that, because these guys, really, you know, their father was an Alabama state senator at some point in history, Hank Irwin, from Birmingham. And he was also a radio evangelist. And these guys, just, the entertainment they make's good. They don't clobber you over the head with a faith-based message. It's real subtle, and they make great movies. So I hope you guys enjoy it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, I would tell you, Bass, we kind of cut our teeth on filming with Bass. He was one of the, I think, the first one that came to town when we started doing filming. So he's very respectful of our area, and we appreciate you coming to come up.
I started in Wilmington, North Carolina, and they have some pretty strict guidelines. And I think back then, I shared the Wilmington guidelines with you, because they're, they're pretty respectful, and, you know, they've spent 40, 50 years there going back and forth with, with these guidelines. And we definitely want to make sure that you guys welcome any filmmakers. We're not all the same, you know. A lot of people think we're the same. Some people that come along, especially with some of the real, real low-budget movies, you've got to make sure that you hold them accountable for, for respecting the town, but we'll take care of you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Well, Jessica, do we need to walk something on the agenda tonight?
Yes. So you may, in your packets, and you may not, I'm not 100% sure, but we do have a resolution. It does need to be adjusted a little bit, because they're, like we said, their filming dates are fluid. So in this resolution, we set some very specific dates. I think we need to change that language. We're just approving the use of multiple classrooms at the K-1 Center, as well as North Beach Park, for the filming of Jesus Revolution. Originally, we put the use of those dates, the use of those facilities for dates. I think that we need to change that to the week of Monday, or the week of March 7th through the 10th, or somewhere thereabouts, to give them what they need for their scheduling. The other part of that is the use, the K-1 Center is requested for filming with entry to the facility to be given two weeks prior, beginning probably somewhere thereabout, somewhere about February 21st, for cleanup of that facility, the spaces they want to utilize, as well as set dressing. It's pretty straightforward, and I will say too, this is my first time working with Bass, and he's been very respectful and very forthcoming with everything he's doing. Eric and Cody were here for filming of The Map of Tiny Perfect Things. You'll remember all of the, the work they had to do, and they are all great stand-up people who will continue to do what we ask of them and them more, so.
That was a great movie. A lot of Fairhope scenes in there.
Yes.
Enjoyed watching that. Okay, and so, I'm just double-checking. So we'll be walking this agenda I, I wanted the resolution on?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, perfect.
Awesome. Any other questions?
None from me. Councilman, any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Jessica, I feel like you should never always want to use information sheets to be for, um, consumer morale.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, I'll leave you this whole, I'll leave you that whole page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, that was easy. Next item up would be Jason to discuss possible water and sewer projects to fund with ARPA money.
I'm going to start this conversation, then let Jason jump in, if that's okay. So, as most of you know, because we've been in Montgomery several times, at least with Councilman Conyers, talking about the ARPA money and all the money that's coming through ADM for water and sewer projects. So, we continue to be on these calls with either the Alabama League or ADM to talk about this money. And so, Jason, Jessica and I sat down and kind of talked about, you know, what projects were out there that we thought we could fund with the money. There's different buckets, but basically, the process is fairly simple. ADM has a form that they use for their state revolving fund that you fill out. They're trying to keep it very simplistic, so it does not force you to have to hire a grant writer, or, you know, hire anybody extra to do this work. They want us to be able to sink all the money into the project. It will pay for pre-engineering, the money will, depending on which bucket that you, you get money out of, but they have asked us just to submit our projects. They are due by June 1st, and once you submit your projects, then they will determine which bucket of money they use, because they have tons of it coming down. And this is only the first pot. There's going to be more that will come down as well. So, we have four projects, and I'll let Jason review those with y'all, and two of them are pretty much ready to go, but two of them, we do need your approval to move forward on. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The first one is the 24-inch water main that we've been working on, on County Road 33, from Treatment Plant 3 back to town, to the three-million-gallon tank there at Walmart.
Okay.
We're somewhere around 75% complete on engineering now, and that was a job, that was one we were going to try to fund internally, if you notice with the budget and everything. But the cost just keeps going up and up on that project. I think now, we're around six million on the estimate, engineer's estimate. So, I think that would be a, a good project, because that's quick, we can get it out. A lot of people's already turned applications in on the SRF that I know of, and I know the mayor knows a lot more, but that's one that we have already got engineered to help. We've already got the application, 95% complete. We just need the okay to, from the mayor, to send that one in. So that one is, is ready.
And again, that's a project that you've already approved, so it's one that's easy for us...
Basically, we'll be getting somebody else to fund it.
Right, exactly. So it would be easy for us to go ahead and submit that. The, like Jason said, he's almost got the whole form filled out. One thing that we've got to clarify is that you do have to send in three years of your audit reports, and I don't know if they want the current audit, which won't be ready till the end of March. But again, they said not to rush to get these in, because June 1st is the deadline. They're going to take them all at the same time, look at them, prioritize them, and then, you know, put them in whatever pot of money is available.
So we can wait till the end of March to...
We can wait till the end of March to submit, but we need, the other projects we need to work on.
And so, you said pre-engineering may be covered, but do we need to, would that be reimbursable? Like, we need to have engineered projects?
Correct. It's reimbursable.
Shovel-ready, submit.
That's correct. They need to be shovel-ready. And just to clarify too, I mean, right now, over a five-year period, there's going to be $765 million available for, for these projects. So, it's a lot of money for the state of Alabama.
And we did clarify, they're, they're okay with 18, 19, 20. They're okay with 18, 19, 20 audited financials.
Okay, good. You did clarify that.
Yes, I clarified that, because I still think, and I think, this is my opinion only, the quicker we can get at least the first application in, because a lot of places already turned in applications.
They have.
And ADM is slow.
Within the first 24 hours, I had a Ballin County mayor's meeting on Friday. Several of the mayors had already turned theirs in from Ballin County. So, they were kind of aggravated about that, because they were like, "We could have spent more time, but, you know, I don't know that that's necessary." But one thing, just to keep in mind, there is a match. I have confirmed that we don't know what the match will be. Once they look at the bucket of money and they determine your project and what kind of funding they're going to give you, it, it won't exceed 50%, but it could be lower than 50%. So, but they have not given us those parameters yet, as far as the match.
Okay.
The other project that's, would be very close, would be the headworks at the wastewater plant. We've discussed that in the past. We know it's, it's on the agenda tonight, if there's money in our budget to do the preliminary engineering, and then to move forward with whatever that we decide, you all decide to help us with, on what that's going to consist of. But it's going to be a sizable project, the headworks in that plant. So anyway, it's on the agenda tonight for the selection of Garver, and Garver does have a representative here as well, for any questions and all. But we highly recommend Garver to do this, okay? So that's...
Ballparking on that project? And I know it wouldn't hold you to the price, but just...
It would be a shot in the dark, I would say, you know, three to four million.
Okay.
And I may miss that terribly, but that's just...
Could be a lot lower than that.
And I'm old, and, and the times have really changed. I don't know if I'm staying up with them or not. And the other two would be, we talked about getting back to Fairhope and getting, in the areas that's kind of been overlooked over the years because of the influence of people coming in and the growth, it's getting back to Fairhope downtown, which would be the fruit and nut area, trying to update the infrastructure there, which would be water and/or sewer.
Sewer, right.
So that's another project which we've talked about. And then, the third, the fourth one would be, that we've previously talked about under the Restore, is the upsizing the water main on County Road 32, from 33 back to town, because of the updating of that. When we've all been out there, the Treatment Plant 3, that's going to be the workhorse for, for the water system for this point forward, and it's to get the water back to town on the south side. So that's something we've talked about, Restore, but that needs done, you know, as soon as possible, and we just don't think Restore would fit that timeframe. So that would be the other one.
One of, one of the other things I just wanted to mention is, I mean, obviously, there's some, you know, they want these to be immediate needs. They want you to have, they want that whoever, the, the sponsoring agency can contribute, which is going to be important. And they're going to look at your rate structure. I mean, there's going to be a lot of things they come in and look at and give us feedback on. But the other thing that I wanted to mention is that, especially that fruit and nut project, one of the buckets of money is specific for lead service lines, and that's what we have there. If y'all remember, we had a big break that the guys had to work overnight on, on Pecan. Was it Pecan or Pier? Pecan or Pier?
Pier.
Pier. And that was a lead service line. So, I mean, that's kind of, if you compare it to cast iron replacement for gas, it's the same kind of, same kind of issue with water. So that's something that we really want to look at and, you know, be able to benefit from this money. And so, it may be a phased project. It may be where we take one street at a time and do it, but again, with this amount of money coming to the state, it's certainly a project that I foresee that we could get done in the next five years.
Okay. That all sounds good. What all do you need from council? Just, we've got two that are already pretty much in process as far as the engineering, and the other two, we just need to authorize...
We need to be able to select an engineer.
Select engineer record and...
Right. And then negotiate a fee schedule.
Okay.
I think tonight was just an update.
It was just an update, just to make sure y'all are okay if we move forward with these projects, and move forward with, you know, the, again, the lead pipes and the County Road 32 to 33 are not something that we talked about doing in this year's budget. We talked about doing with Restore. So, we do want to be able to approve the professional services contract, and then negotiate with an engineer, and go ahead and get those projects moving.
Okay. I mean, I think you got to get...
Yeah, the money while it's there.
Get started while the money's out there.
Right.
Councilman, any, any other thoughts?
Councilman Boone, you, this is your wheelhouse. Do you have any feedback?
Should have been done yesterday.
Okay.
All right. Sounds like unanimous support here.
Okay, thank you.
I got it, and Jason, that's a very good plan on upsizing that pipe and getting that duct wire in. In my opinion.
Committee updates. Councilman Robinson?
I don't think so.
None? All right. Got some bean? None? All right, we're going to be flying through tonight. All right, none. We got none. I did have, Councilman Robinson had, wanted to commend the Fairup Environmental Advisory Board for working on, working on some requests that they were submitting to, they would like for us to submit to the comprehensive plan, to the engineers working on that. Just, he said to make sure I thanked them for their, for their efforts and appreciate their hard work, so. Going through the council agenda, we'll go ahead and cover this. Hunter, you got several zoning ordinances. If you want to maybe come up and address those items, we can go ahead and get some questions out of the way. I know some of them are public hearings, so...
Some public hearings, you know, we won't, we won't get into too much of those, but I will say on the first one, I believe that's Agenda Item 5 regarding rooftop terraces, we may consider not opening the public hearing for that one, introducing it, discussing, but we've had some talks about some potential amendments to that. If we do that, that would be substantial changes, and we'd need to re-advertise that. So, and then come back with a public hearing after we do that. The timeframe on that's unfortunately just the way those ads work. We're two days away from being able to get it back a month from today, so it will be the March 28th council meeting.
For the public hearing, or for the...
For the public hearing.
Okay.
So, I believe that would be introducing it. I can present what came out of Planning Commission, and we can discuss any potential changes, and then just send that back to staff to revise and re-advertise. Is that appropriate?
How about, we want to hit us with a, I know it's a public hearing, but just an overview on Item Number 6 of the residential accessory structures?
Yes, so that, that one came, was generated more from the Board of Adjustment. There was some, as, as most of you know, the Board of Adjustment, variances and hardship are about land. It's the shape and size and topography of a lot. It is not about what people have built onto a lot. That, that's, you know, because you bought a, and it's not just the person that owns it, it's what they purchased or inherited. So, a building, the way it sits, doesn't create a hardship to grant a variance. We initially started looking at ways to handle that within the variance process, but figured this was the easiest. And in essence, what we're attempting to do here, this is mostly impacted in the fruit and nut, where you have historic homes, one-story historic homes, and completely legal for someone to tear those down, build a two-story home, and then they can build a legal accessory building behind that. Our regulations right now don't allow you to build an accessory structure that's taller than the primary structure. So, this would give a five-foot window to save the primary or historic home, leave it one-story, build the accessory building with allowance of five foot taller, and be administratively reviewed and approved.
Okay.
Two of the zoning cases are, I will kind of address the Montrose PUD. We can bring, there were some questions about how to do that. We looked, Chris Williams, our land use attorney, and, and some of those questions, and feel it best that the, kind of the way we presented is the way to go there. It reverts back to an existing PUD and not start a precedent by vacating our sunset clause within the existing PUDs. There's a little bit of clarification we can present that I think some of the neighbors might appreciate.
So, is there a sunset clause on the existing PUD?
So, no, the existing PUD did not have an expiration. And what we've recommended is, if for some reason, the applicant cannot either make this work within the two-year window, or come back to commission, to the council and ask for extra time, then it reverts back to the approved PUD that's already went through the public hearing process, the, both applicant and the neighbors were happy with. And, and that locks it in, and it doesn't put us in a situation where, you know, there's some historic right-of-ways here, so it reverting back to, our language now would revert back to RA and create, which typically you, you want to, you know, that's, that's not a bad thing. RA's probably some of the largest lots, but it brings into question what to do with those historic right-of-ways, and whose response for opening those up, and all of those good things. So having that PUD is sitting on top of that, in the case that this can't be worked out, which I do think it will. I mean, I think that's, that's highly doable. We'll just have to work through some processes for, right now, those are county right-of-ways, whether they're turned over to the city, and we decide what to do there, or the county decides options. This PUD kind of sets the site plan in place. Those technical things will have to be worked out, and a preliminary plat will have to be produced to ensure it matches what this PUD site plan is.
And in general, if I recall, the, the neighbors, as well as, as the developers who proposed the putt, I mean, they, what they decided on was to kind of close off some of those streets that the city had wanted to open up for connectivity?
The, it's, no, no one really wanted to, there's some topographic challenges to those historic right-of-ways. I don't, I don't think we really ever wanted to, even in the previous plan, it was discussed, not to open those up. What we're showing in the site plan is access through those right-of-ways or very near those right-of-ways, but the mechanism we do that, there's, there's multiple options. They can remain county right-of-ways. County can give an easement. County can vacate the right-of-ways. County can force them to put the access drive on private property through an easement. County can turn those over to the cities, and we have those options available to us as well. So, you know, how we, how we ultimately do that is a mechanism yet to be determined. This just shows where it is, and they will not be connecting to many of the streets within Montrose, historic Montrose.
Okay. Then we've got the property being rezoned from low-density, single-family to the highway transition district.
Mm-hmm. That's a pretty, pretty standard one there. You know, the highway transition district was what we, the zoning district we created to deal with some of those historically single-family residential properties on Greeno Road explicitly. And it's a softer option when it's not within a village per comp plan, a little bit softer use that allows professional offices and some other lighter uses.
And then, the southeast corner of 34 and 13, request to go R2?
Yep. Conditional annexation straight to R2. And we did see a site plan in there. The original request came as a PUD with site plan driven. That's, that's off the table. That, that was just used as reference, so that'll be tweaked. But if R2, they will have to come in and meet standard R2s on it.
Okay. All right, I think that covered all of your stuff. Anything else you need to...
Do want to kind of give a quick update? I know with the moratorium that's put in place, I think, all for your patience, that's kind of getting through the applications for February was challenging. And just to kind of give you an update of where we're at and where, we've compiled the long list of things to accomplish. We're meeting with the Planning Commission and trying to put a priority on those things. Some will be zoning amendments that'll have to come to council. Some will be subdivision regulations to stop with Planning Commission. Expect to put an Agenda Item on the May, March 14th council meeting, kind of give you an update, see if our, what we come up with a priority list matches with what you're envisioning. If we need to tweak anything as we move forward through the next nine months, we can do that.
Okay.
We do have a comp plan meeting, comp plan meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM at the library, and at 10:00 AM on Wednesday at the rec center.
Is that the last two, or just...
And we also have a virtual meeting at 6:00, 7:00 PM on Wednesday night. So they're going to put a camera in my face and put me on Facebook and let people throw eggs at me, so.
We are looking at the possibility of scheduling something maybe on a Sunday afternoon, I think it is, on March the 6th at Fairup Brewing, to try to reach kind of a younger demographic to come in and talk with us there. So, I think we're just in the beginning stages of getting that planned as well.
Okay, thank you.
And Mark, those will be the kind of last of this first phase of meetings. We have, March 3rd and 8th will be pretty big meetings. That will be, the first one's kind of the shret, too, that we'd like everybody that's attended these meetings to come to, and then they'll present some ideas on the 8th. And that'll be the first thing that we can react to. So, thank you.
That does not mean free beer for everybody.
No, bring your wallet.
Just clarify that. Yes, that would be by your own.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Next item is final adoption of an ordinance that would be changing the mission of the Historic Preservation Committee. Councilman Robinson, is that your wheelhouse?
It is. That's something we talked about last time when we introduced, and it's been something that, that's been discussed in our work session before. I think Skip came and discussed, Skip Jones came to discuss it. You know, they're, they're expanding their mission and focusing less on strictly getting a commission put in place and focusing more on education. For the time being, I think it's still their hope at some point in the future, they'll be able to get that commission and get that put in place, but for now, they want, they want to be able to do some more things.
Focus on education and some items like that?
That's correct.
Okay. Sounds good. Let's see, next item on the agenda is going to be related to water. Jason, I'm sure you got several items on here. If you want to just kind of hit the, hit the highlights, this would be on the ordinance on basically connection fees and expenses.
This is the charges to, the system development charges that we met, too, by, to the council members to review about a month or so ago, maybe a couple of months ago, actually. But just now bringing it towards, to the council, but basically just, and Jason can fill you in, but basically just establishes a fee that we're able to communicate and put on our website, so we don't have to do so much calculation.
So these two items, at least, just need to be introduced tonight?
Correct.
Okay. All right, yes, sir.
You want to go over the water first?
Yeah, if you don't mind, please.
That's the one you got pulled up, the water?
Yes, sir.
So, if you'll read down, this is what we talked about in the meeting was SDCs when we met one-on-one, and then I think we had a work session where we talked about it. That's the SDCs in that first chart, the fireline SDCs, that's connection. Uh, the third column is tap fees. That's something that we did not talk about. We said we were going to, and that's this time we're talking about it. So, you all know that expenses has went way up. Right now, currently, a three-quarter is a five-hundred-dollar installation fee, or we call tap fee. Um, that just, doesn't pay for the labor materials to put in now with, and Mr. Boone very well knows that our, our Ball Corp stops have gone up to almost seventy dollars apiece. Uh, so you take factor all the increases, so eight hundred dollars is what we're proposing.
Okay.
Uh, and that's pretty much in the middle of the road of what all our neighbors are doing as well. And it also averages out whether it's an off-site or on-site, so just kind of split the middle. So, same price which, whether the side of the road you live on, whether it's a bore or not. And then, of course, the, and if it changes, one-inch residential, it's a thousand dollars. Tap fee in one-inch commercial is fifteen-hundred-dollar tap fee. Typically, commercial takes the bigger backflow, so that just, that's where that comes into play, and also a bigger meter box.
Okay. And then moving down to sewer, more of the, more of the same, different?
And also, and if you notice, we updated, took some language out, you know, on the water. So, sewer, the same, it's the same thing. Prior to this being updated, there was not a tap fee for sewer. I don't, don't know why, but they were just a capacity fee, as they called it, which, you know, we're calling it the SDC now. That fee doesn't change a whole lot. A three-quarter SDC is still fifteen-hundred dollars for sewer, just like it was. It's just now, if you'll flip over or on the next page there, you'll see that there is actually a tap fee where they're paying for the service before they were not. So, that's adding that seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars is for inch and a half low pressure, and that's up to sixty feet. In terms of sixty feet, would be billed per foot. And that's reasonable. Sixty feet will get you under most county roads. The only thing that that would entail is a state highway, where you're having to go from right-of-way to right-of-way, you'd get further than that, but county roads and city roads are sixty feet, shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
And two-inch is fifteen, and then four-inch gravity is eight hundred. And then on the commercial, the only thing different would be six-inch gravity for service, and it's fifteen hundred.
Okay.
So, really, the only updating is adding the fees to sewer, updating the fees on water, and clarifying the SDCs, so it, it doesn't matter where you live, the SDCs are the same.
Okay.
I mean, it's based on meter size.
All right, so whether you're in the city or out of the city, doesn't matter?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Councilman, any questions for Jason, the water and sewer ordinances? All right, uh, Jason, I think the next item you've got on here, and you may have just mentioned it a second ago, was, uh, approved in Garver for the engineering for the headworks, design and treatment.
Yes, sir. This is preliminary engineering, so it's not the full-blown. We'll have a project when they're done. This is just, we're, we're getting a direction together by meeting with our staff and operators and their engineers, and looking at the flows that we have coming in today and what the future is. Uh, so that's what this initial is. And once we present that, then we'll have a budgetary number, we can come back and do the official engineering, I would say the construction engineering.
Okay. Um, let's see. Then we've just got regular lift station odor control, chemical?
Yeah, we'd like to touch just a little bit on that. This is a, if you've noticed, like on section down here, you seen the green box sitting on the right-of-way? Uh, that is the, the new style odor control that we're using, which is a PAC, which is a particulate activated carbon. Uh, it's a filter that we change periodically. Uh, so we're, are, we're doing this in anticipation of doing away with the, uh, chemical. So, this is for, to finish out the three-year contract, this is the last year on it, um, but, uh, then we don't proceed to use that amount of money, and we're, we took all, we, by what we've done so far, we've already removed two, uh, chemical feed systems, so that's our intent to do away. So, they, we won't be coming back to you all at the end of this budget year asking to, to revisit this with more chemicals.
Okay. All right, so that'll eliminate that. Next, we've got the, uh, let's see, uh, SCADA for wastewater treatment plant?
This is the VT SCADA we've talked about in the budget. Uh, also, electric, we're piggybacking with electric, just because theirs is the same.
Okay.
Uh, and it's also a saving of both money by us going to the same type SCADA, which this is a very good system. It's used, you know, worldwide. I think it's the most up-to-date.
Okay, let's see.
And...
McWayne pipe?
That's, um, eight, twelve-inch ductile iron. It's for a, uh, extending the water main up on St. Michael's Way, uh, for the school and to come around and give us the north feed on one-eighty-one.
Okay, so this is just for inventory for that section?
It's for that, it's for that project.
Okay.
If you'll notice, the last meeting, you approved the extension of our on-call contractor, so we can lock in some of those older rates.
Okay, and then...
And one thing Jason hadn't mentioned on that, is this is going to give us the ability to pick up quite a few customers. There's a lot of developments going out that, you know, out that way.
Oh, yeah.
It's, we're gonna pick up a lot of customers by extending this water line, so it's a great project, and Jason's done a great job of figuring out extending that contract the last meeting, and then by purchasing these materials, we're saving a ton of money by doing this, it this way. So, Jason, thank you for your work on that. And also, on the odor control, if any of you have walked along that Bay Route, right there by Fells, you know, for a while, they had the, that odor control out there, and you can still smell the odor control. Um, it was, I mean, it was not good, so it's just a chemical smell, but, um, Jason then really did some good research by going to visit some of our neighbors here in Baldwin County and find out what they were doing, and have come up with this. And to have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar cost savings every year, that we won't have to renew this contract by doing what they're doing, is going, is huge. So, um, thank you for your work on that, you and your staff. We appreciate it.
Curtis and Tim has been invaluable with all this, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say, uh, thank you for being a good steward on, on both of those items and, and saving money. I know we're always, uh, harping about saving money, and, and you, you deserve a pat on the back as much as, as much as people give a hard time about it. You deserve a pat on the back when you do save some money.
We got a great department. I know y'all know, but they're out twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
They're doing a good job.
We appreciate it. We really do. Thank you. Uh, okay, let's see. Next item, uh, Richard Johnson, I think, would be, I've got several items for you, but the, uh, the Veterans One-O-four Scenic Project, that engineering?
Uh, ye- yes, sir. As you know, the NPO has funded, uh, this roundabout for the intersection of North Section, uh, Veterans Scenic and, and City One-O-four, and it's kind of a, a, a two-part funding, meaning that we have PE, uh, the preliminary engineering, uh, allow, allocated for this fiscal year to follow October one, uh, the construction, but they've gone ahead and just completed the complete funding agreement, um, in, in One Fells Loop. So, this is the first act we have to do to actually start, uh, then to come back with you with a recommendation to, uh, negotiate with an engineer and then get it, uh, designed, and then hopefully be, uh, queued up and ready to go on October one to send it out to, for bid.
Okay. And then that would be, uh, a project that we would plan to, to construct next year?
That is correct. And, uh, the, you know, the, kind of in the perfect world, and kind of it, since it's a known, known fact that we're gonna be funded, you know, it would be lovely to go ahead and have this completed and advertised, so that it's sitting there, time just ready, as soon as the money's released, we can, uh, you know, issue the contract and get moving on it. So, that's kind of the goal.
And I, I get asked about this project more frequently than, than most things lately, and, and just for the public's, I guess, knowledge, uh, the project was already scheduled to happen in twenty-twenty-three. What we're doing is moving the engineering up a year, and, and that should, in theory, put us in a better position to get the project started and completed in the origi, in the original...
That is correct. We, uh, we knew going into this that we had the PE dollars for this fiscal year, but we know we don't have the construction dollars until the next fiscal year. But the good news is, if we kind of time this right, we'll, we'll hopefully not have too much downtime between completing of design and actually constructing the project.
Okay, and I know there's gonna be a lot of questions about that design and how we're gonna flow traffic while we're doing this project, so I'm sure y'all will be coming back to us with...
That's gonna be a big part of it, is how we, how we do the temporary traffic and how we build it. Um, and I think that, um, you know, there's, there's two schools of thoughts there. Um, I know, I think, both with the roundabouts at Fairhope Avenue on thirteen and Gafer, it was pretty much a full closure. Uh, I did insist in, in a, in a, a time in my past on sixty-four and thirteen, that we actually kept at least three legs of that intersection open at all times during construction. Now, the contractor probably didn't like it, and the engineer had a tough time with it, but based upon the volume of traffic, it was a necessity. I think we have enough real estate to work here, where we can, you know, the nice thing is, you can take, you can take veterans off the leg at any time, and you really don't hurt anybody, because if, if they like to come into town that way, that just means they're going down to one-oh-four and taking a right. No one really leaves town via veterans, because it only allows you to turn right on US ninety-eight, so, so that's nice that you have one leg that, that's easy, but you're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look at a T-intersection on, on temporary surfaces or whatever to keep that flow from Section Street to, to one-oh-four, and Section, Section Street to scenic as, as much as possible. And that's gonna be kind of the design challenge there, but it, it can be done. It may not be pretty, it may not be fun, but, uh, and, and, you know, ultimately, your worst-case scenario, if you could, you can manage that, then maybe the only time you have a full closure is for a, a period of time to complete some paving or something of that nature, and I did that over a weekend once, and it worked. Uh, we opened it on a Monday morning at about six AM, and, uh, and after closing it on a Friday afternoon at about five PM, so, uh, that's gonna be one of the design challenges. Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, the next item is just a bi-annual bridge inspection, that's...
Yes, this is just, uh, asking you to allow us to negotiate, uh, a fee for SafeSpan LLC to conduct our annual bridge inspection. And just so you know, uh, we're on even years, so every even year, we have to do our full , uh, bridge inspection.
Okay.
And then, uh, Council President, uh, number twenty is really not mine, but we are involved and we're supportive. That's the, uh, the decorative crosswalk on Bancroft.
Okay.
And then twenty-three is mine, and this is the saga of my garbage truck that, uh, started in the last meeting, that you said, uh, if we'd put it on the agenda, you would entertain, uh, the consideration there. And then, uh, number twenty-five, you, you don't know how hard it has been to get a price on a, on a Ford Ranger, but we've got one. This is a, a budgeted replacement of the mosquito spray truck, and we just didn't really, couldn't justify a full-size vehicle for that, for that job. It's, uh, uh, so we did find one and got a price, and we're asking you to approve that budgeted item.
And during, uh, during mosquito season, how often is that truck rolling in, in spring?
Uh, during mosquito season, uh, our, our target goal is it runs a minimum of five nights a week, generally Monday through Fridays. Um, and, uh, we can do a little flexing there. The nice thing is, we pretty much operate that with part-time employees. Uh, we have some, um, uh, individuals been with a long time that come back and, and do that, and, uh, and so, you know, they basically, uh, as soon as the sun sets, they go out and run a route, and our goal is to spray the entire city, uh, on a weekly basis.
Okay. Let's see.
And that's all of the agenda items I have. And just a, a kind of real quick, uh, department update, just, uh, Public Works, our mind is now on event season. Uh, we kind of, always kicks off with, with Arbor Day, which was a great success this past, uh, Saturday. Thanks for everybody's participation on that, but we are in the full mode of thinking about Montegraw. On Church Street, uh, they, they got half of the block on, uh, on Church between Magnolia and Fairhope paved today with binder. They'll do the other half by Wednesday. Uh, the contractor's job is to, you know, all the, all the sidewalks are patched up, all the road is surfaced, and they are out of there, and we'll, we'll remain pretty much off the job until we get through Arts Craft Festival. So, that was always, always planned. So, we're gonna have that safed up, so that, that those that visit and, and, uh, those that parade will have a, a paved road and a, and a, a interim, an intern, uh, interim completed project area until they come back to, to, to move forward on that. And, um, and I will tell you that we have made progress in a, a subject matter that we've talked to you about. Um, you know, we received a grant through, uh, the Baldwin EMA for barricades, and we did use them at the Christmas parade. It was a little bit of a learning curve, but we'll eliminate about a half of the cabling this year, and our hopefully goal, we'll get in line for another, a grant, and, and by this time next year, we'll be telling you that we're putting no cables out for barricading, uh, at Montegraw Parade. So, we're kind of excited about that. We're still figuring exactly the logistics of that out, but we are ready, and if you weren't aware, we have, uh, the Mystic Mutts, uh, as well as K-O-E-R on this Saturday, and the mayor has already said it's gonna be absolutely Chamber of Commerce weather, and the crowds are gonna be thick, so we're gonna be prepared for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Richard. Um, next item, uh, hiring of a new gas superintendent. Mayor, would that be you? Or Terry, or who would that be?
Yeah, Terry can come up, too. Um, so, we are, um, Terry unfortunately is retiring and, and, and leaving us, but, um, it's like I told him this morning, I said, "It's unfortunate for us and fortunate for him," because that's what we all work hard for, is to be able to do that. Um, combined total, Terry has twenty-eight years of service with City of Fairhope, and hate to see him go, but this is one thing that we've started, is being able to hire his replacement while he's here, to have some overlap, and, um, so that's what you have on the agenda tonight.
Okay, well...
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Appreciate you sticking around to, to train whoever that may be.
Yeah, I, I hope we can get somebody in here for sure. That, that would help a lot.
All right, and Terry, I know, I think it's off...
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five? No?
Twenty-eight, I'm sorry.
Twenty-eight, okay.
So, that's a dump trailer that we have, and, um, because of the timing and the materials, it is over budget, about four thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's probably going up by the day as we speak, unfortunately.
All right, and, and that's it, right?
Yeah, that's the only one I've got tonight.
Okay, a- any other, just general updates from the gas department?
Uh, just general updates, uh, we're extremely busy, just as, last time I explained the calls from January, this, so far in February, we had fifty-three calls just for inspections in gas meter sets. That's not counting leaks, um, and we've caught in over forty-two services to run just this month, so, uh...
Busy.
It's just non-stop.
Yeah.
It just continues, and phone never stops ringing.
That's gainful employment, right?
Yes.
For, for at least a little bit longer.
Little bit longer.
Well, we, we do appreciate you, twenty-eight years of service. That, that means a lot to the city.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Boone?
Nope. Hey, please, lose it. My house, everything.
We gotta, we gotta all pick a time, you know, and, uh, this is just my time.
To me, I gotta like it.
Yeah. Well, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Council President, I did want to mention that. So, in the future, Corey Pierce is here. Corey has been our, um, purchasing manager, and Corey is now gonna be taking over as our HR manager. So, um, we have filled one, one void and created another.
He's hiding right behind that monitor. I couldn't see him at all.
So, from here on out, Corey, I mean, we'll be able to address those, um, personnel issues, but, um, he's here with us tonight for the work session, and he will start officially half-days on February twenty-first. Um, he'll work in HR in the afternoon and purchasing in the morning to help us make that transition, and we'll be interviewing for that purchasing manager. So, we're excited to have Corey and excited that he likes to work in HR. Um, really excited about that, so we can take that off Lisa's plate, take that off my plate, and let Corey handle what he loves.
Well, thank you, Corey, and congratulations, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Look forward to it, sir.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And Mayor, thank you for pointing that out. Number 17, item 17, looks like that, this would be you. You've got several on there.
Yes, thank you. This just has to do with the franchise agreement we had currently with Bruce Cuddy, who teaches pickleball lessons at the rec center and the tennis center. We discovered that the franchise agreements just really aren't working for us. There's really no accountability there. Just so you know, to refresh your memory, with the franchise agreement, they are to pay 20% of their gross proceeds back to the city for using city facilities, and we just got to digging around, looking into it, and it wasn't making any sense to us. So the rec board did approve to terminate this agreement with Mr. Cuddy with your approval. And then the next item would be to set court rental fees for the rec department. My staff basically came up with fees that were approved by the rec board. We're looking at $25 for a half basketball court, which would be one pickleball court, and $50 for a full basketball court. And so that would apply to pickleball and basketball within the rec center. And then the third item there is just to reject all the bids that we got for the bathroom buildings at Valana and Founders. Basically, our lowest bid came in at enough to build an 1,800-square-foot house, and we're only looking at a 740-square-foot building. So we're gonna go back to the drawing board and see what we can do to figure that one out.
That's crazy. So going back real quick to the pickleball, so the pickleball courts out at Stimson, those are free, first come, first served?
That's correct.
Okay. So those are free, but the ones indoors, you gotta rent?
Well, they are free to be played on, but if you're teaching lessons, then they have to pay. And so what's gonna happen with the new software in place, they'll be able to get on our website and see what time slots are available if they want to teach lessons, and he can reserve a court with our approval and pay for that court before he ever can get on the court, if that makes sense.
And the same for pickleball and basketball inside the rec center?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. The courts would be rented ahead of time and paid for in advance before they're able to be used.
Is this only for lessons, or is this for, you know, local travel teams that use them, or anything?
It could be used for travel teams as well, and what we're gonna do is start moving into registering basically our travel ball team so that we have more information on them. Basically, our standard policy is if they're 80% or greater Fairhope kids, then we allow them to use our facilities.
Got it. Okay. All right. I thought that was the case. I just was, when I saw basketball on here today, I was...
Right. Right now, we really don't have a handle on what travel teams are using our facilities, and we really need to figure that monster out.
I agree.
All right, let's see.
I had a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I should've asked you earlier. Did the rec board also review those fees? I'm assuming they did.
Yes, they approved the fees, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then we've got an item we're walking on tonight that's related to soccer, so that's in that rec arena as well. Okay, all right. Any other updates, just general?
Well, we have been working, last week, we spent a lot of time at the community kids park, trying to sprucing it up for the spring, and we have been working to install the new garden at the Rotary Youth Park, and it's coming along well and looking great. So we're excited about new things for the spring. Other than that, we're just crazy busy getting spring ball rolling for basically every sport.
I can imagine. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Junior City Council, Jessica, would that be you? You mind just coming in, yeah, giving us the...
There are no new developments since the last time we came, and you'll notice in the resolution, we do not have a specific date written in there, because last year, when we wrote a specific date in the resolution, we ended up having major weather issues, and we had to change it week after week after week. Their intention is to do it the weekend before arts and crafts, so I think that's maybe the 12th or 13th, and we'll be working that out, and we'll, of course, let you know as soon as that is set in stone.
Okay, and they're just gonna paint that one?
They're painting that crosswalk.
Okay.
It's gonna be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see. Next, the LGS cable television agreement. Mayor, would that be you, or would that be?
Kim.
The franchise agreement? Number 21.
Yes, I'm sorry.
This is for, currently, we have under contract is attorney that reviews all your telecommunication contracts, the franchise, the MediaCom AT&amp;T, and MediaCom sent in a contract that, our contract doesn't end until, I believe, 2025, but they went ahead and sent one in now for us to review. It was a bad, bad deal, so, in which that's what you hire local government services to. So local government services is recommended, and I agree, is for them to do an audit on MediaCom to make sure that the annexes, what's been annexed, that they're paying the correct amount of the customers that have MediaCom, that they're paying those franchises in. And so that's what this is for, is for them to actually do an audit of MediaCom for the amount that they're collecting and remitting to make sure what they are remitting to us is correct. So, but what hyped it was them sending a contract that would reduce our revenue by like 70%.
And just so y'all, local government services is Greg Fender, so y'all probably heard his name quite a bit, not local government services. So he's the one who, you know, we're recommending putting that under contract, because we do not pay Greg currently for all the stuff that he's been doing. He gets paid by the telecom companies, but this will allow us to be able to use him for that audit.
Got it. And well, and I appreciate y'all just investigating and not just signing off on whatever comes across.
Yes, I mean, that was, as y'all, as the council, recommended to hire a specialized attorney for those telecommunications. He's done a great job of saving us money, gaining revenue for what, you know, which Ms. Burrell has handled, got a lot of those phone calls prior to us hiring Greg, and they just try to, you know, throw stuff at you for you to approve, and Greg has been really great about standing and, you know, representing the city for gaining our revenue, not trying to cut our revenue. So this would just for his firm to do an audit on MediaCom's books to make sure what they are submitting, they are submitting the correct dollar amount per our contract.
Yeah, I want to add to that, Mr. Chairman, that typically, the work that Mr. Fender does, he puts his fees in the contracts.
Kim was just saying that.
Say that already.
Telecom company pays for it.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, and I appreciate you helping get him on board. It sounds like that's been a valuable relationship, so. Kim, did you have anything else on here, or anything else to cover?
No, sir, everything's...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next item up is for Sunbelt Fire for breathable air all-in-one. Chief, would that be you?
Yes, sir. That's the air compressor. It's what we fill our air tanks with. It'll be going out to fire station two. It went out to bid...
Corey, how long ago?
A while ago. Anyway, we got two respondents, and Sunbelt was the most correct respondent.
Okay. Anything else going on in the fire department?
Busy as always. We ran 101 calls in January, and also, we're up in, we got a firehouse, a grant from Firehouse Restaurants to update our thermal imaging cameras, the cameras that we can see the heat and smoke in the walls, or the heat and fire in the walls, and helps us search thermal imagery cameras. So we're replacing all five of those before too long, so.
Good, thank you. That's great, great that they're sponsoring that. Appreciate the update. Let's see, next item, Jade, electric department. Looks like y'all buying some vehicles.
Yes, sir, this is the last three I have on my list.
Okay.
Um, just go over what's going on in the electric department. We are still presently working on Wolfie Station, trying to get it out of the ground. Everything looks good there so far. We are kicking off our 46 to 12 line work project. We have a couple of pitch points that we're working through, but hopefully we'll get that kicked off and running at the end of March. Trying to get all the tree trimming done for the parade routes. I think we'll have all that done by tomorrow. So everything's going good, but yeah, tonight, I've got three items on the list, and they were budgeted. One was overbudgeted, but it's just due to the time. That's number 27. The number 30 and 31, the 30, which is the F-250, which was originally budgeted for a 550, but of course, we can't find a 550, and we think that the 250 will work for our needs. And the 2022 F-150 four-wheel drive, which will be a replacement for the Tahoe that was budgeted. There is no Tahos to be bought on the state contract, and this will be in place of it, which will be my vehicle.
Okay. All right. So that's in lieu of a Tahoe, though?
Yes, sir.
All right. Price point still roughly the same?
Yes, actually, I think we'll come in lower than that.
A little cheaper?
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, appreciate you taking the downgrade.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no problem.
I think he's saving $24,000.
Now that was a downgrade, but...
Good money.
Okay, good. I always like to hear that. Anything else going on in electric that we need to be brought up to speed on?
No, sir. We're still working towards the, of course, Jeremy Morgan now is gonna be the AMI coordinator, and we are working on our SCADA system, working through that, so that should be up and running here shortly, hopefully.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, sir. Library board has asked, I think, to pull this item. They may have gotten a little bit ahead of themselves, and I'm sure everything's fine. They just hadn't had a chance as a board to vote on this yet, so that appointment's being pulled. Next item up is beer and wine license for Fairhope Chocolate. Any issues with that, Chief?
Not at all.
Okay. All right, no issues with that. The next item would be for ESRT to block out April 28 through May 9 for their spring performance of Theater on the Bluff, and does that check out as well? Any issues with that? This is pretty standard. Okay. That pretty much wraps it up. I might as well go ahead and cover this resolution that we wanted to walk on this evening for the soccer league. So let me go ahead and just read this to Council, and we can discuss it now and save some time during the actual meeting. So the resolution states, be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Fairhope, Alabama, that the city council hereby approves and adopts the following for the city's recreational soccer league and BLAST and shall take effect immediately. Number one, that BLAST will disassociate with the city. BLAST will no longer run the city's recreational soccer league starting immediately. BLAST will remove all city logos and references to City of Fairhope, sponsored, affiliated, associated with language on their website, social media, and all marketing materials, and will change the name of the recreational league to youth soccer, or something else different from the term rec or recreational league. BLAST will notify the parents of those that have registered for spring 2022 recreational league soccer, that BLAST has disassociated with the city and is no longer a city-sponsored recreation league. Number two, references to BLAST's website contact information, where other details will be removed from the city's website, recreation page, and other city media. City will announce no recreation league for spring of 2022. And starting immediately, number, item number three, starting immediately, BLAST will pay standard field usage rates in accordance with the most recent field use agreement for all use of fields by club soccer, tournament teams, travel, and the youth soccer or league, formerly known as recreation league, for all practices, matches, lessons, tournaments, and other use. And item number four, that BLAST will turn over contact information and data from its electronic files and software to the city for recreational participants, as well as soccer goals will be retained at the Fairhope Soccer Complex and become property of the city. BLAST will maintain goals and equipment with documented expenses and receipts that will be reimbursed through the city with prior approval by the mayor and/or his or her designated. Credit may be provided for future field use costs for equal value if approved by the mayor and should not exceed $5,000. So any conversation? Mayor, would you like to recap any of that, or any details?
I'd be happy to. I mean, I think probably, obviously, this is an agreement that is addressing spring of 2022. We've had multiple meetings about this. We hope that this will, you know, take care of any issues that we've been having, not with the soccer league or anything else. We think that they're doing a great job running the league, but it was brought to light that there could be some issues that we are allowing them to use our fields because they do operate a travel program as well. So this will hopefully take care of that, and then we also established in September, the city council established those field use agreements, which they have agreed to pay in full for all their programs in the spring tournaments, running the youth program, whatever that might be. They're, you know, we'll pay those, and we collect those in advance. And then as far as the goals, obviously, they have already turned over all their recreational files. We already have copies of all that. They've turned over three years' worth of data, and what we requested from them was, you know, all the participants' addresses, those kind of, that kind of information, which they have turned over. BLAST is going to maintain the goals because they are out there and they're able to do that. They have already purchased this year. They have not asked for this reimbursement, but this year alone, they've already replaced more than $10,000 worth of nets. They did not ask for reimbursement on that, but if there's any future goal maintenance, then that is where we're talking about, that they may ask for reimbursement, that they could get in the form of a credit towards the field use agreement if necessary. But they have already done that this year and have not asked for that reimbursement.
One other thing that I did not see in here, but city will run the concession stand and may choose to sign a lease agreement with BLAST.
Right. We have, we've talked about either the city will run that with possibly some part-time personnel that we are already existing on the payroll, or, because there's a couple dates that we're kind of pressed on, which will be, I think, March the 4th. There's a high school tournament, and then after that, there's one other date that we're kind of targeting, but that it either could be in the form of a lease agreement, or the city would take over that responsibility.
And we can cross the bridge a little later about how we want to approach the fall soccer league, but we probably need to have a deadline that we want to make a decision by on that.
We do, and, you know, currently, they have 400, a little over 400 kids registered for the youth program, so the youth soccer program. So again, we think that they're doing a great job with that program. We know that the kids are, you know, able to play soccer, they're getting what they need, and hopefully this will take care of the legal aspects of the league running and using city property. So that's how we're moving forward right now.
Who's gonna coordinate field scheduling and all that? How's, who's that gonna go through?
They've already sent their schedule, so Pat will do that. Hopefully, when the software program is up and active, you know, they're ready to put in their dates, but they've already sent those dates that they would like to have it. So, and again, this will not be exclusive. If there's somebody else that comes in, they'll be able to use those fields just as BLAST is.
And I will say that I may have been the last person among those of y'all sitting up here to be involved in this, so I appreciate everybody else's efforts, and I appreciate Pat, Mayor, BLAST, what all they've done, Marcus and Chris, you know, I know we've had a lot of people involved with this, and hopefully this is a clean resolution, makes everybody, you know, as happy as it can be, and allows us to move forward, so.
At least a step in the right direction. Again, I think, you know, we don't want to lose sight of the thing that's most important, that the kids have the opportunity to play soccer and have the opportunity to grow in that sport, if that's what they choose to do, and that's kind of the opportunities that BLAST provides. And again, we entered an agreement with them 10 years ago that we really did not know that there was an issue with, so we're glad to be able to clean that up and still offer those opportunities to the kids who are playing.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Council members, did y'all have anything you wanted to add, or we?
I've got several questions.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, thank you for that. You answered several of the questions that I had. I guess, first question I'll ask of the city attorney, Marcus, have you reviewed this? Does this arrangement pass the legal test?
I've reviewed briefly. The only, the only, I guess, question I had is when it references recreation, there's also an annual league too, which has been part of our rec. Is that also, the information's gonna come forward with that?
It can, I mean, yeah.
I'm just asking questions, that's the only thing. And then the only other question I had, Mr. Burrell, was calling it youth soccer. Every other rec league that is a city-sponsored is Fairview Basketball, Fairview Baseball, Fairview...
Is that also, the information's going to come forward with that?
It can, I mean, yeah.
I was asking questions, that's the only thing. And then the only other question I had, Mr. Burrell, was calling it youth soccer, every other rec league that is a city-sponsored is Fairview Basketball, Fairview Baseball, Fairview Football, Fairview Softball. I didn't know if there might be some type of confusion with letting them term themselves or call themselves youth if we are in fact going forward.
Can we call it BLAST Youth Soccer?
We can.
That's really a definite, that's really what it is, right?
Yeah, that, that's what it, that's what it would be called, is BLAST Youth Soccer.
Should we put it in the resolution? I'm just trying to clean this up. Could we put it to, you know, there in the, number one, call that BLAST Youth Soccer?
We just did not want them to use the term recreation because we feel like that is affiliated with the city more than youth.
Well, if it's nothing but BLAST Youth Soccer, can we call it, can we call it that in the resolutions? Do you might have any problems penciling that in?
Why even have to use youth in the word? I mean, why just kind of BLAST Soccer League?
Just all BLAST Soccer, yeah.
That's fine, yeah, I think, I don't think they would have a problem with it at all.
I mean, I don't, you know, just to eliminate that.
I mean, they may choose to use youth in their marketing, is, that's what we're trying to reach.
Well, I think BLAST Soccer League would be fine with them. I think that was us asking them to, to, not to use recreation, and so we, we are the ones who suggested that other term. I think they would be fine with that.
Actually, yeah, it's covered. It says, or something else different from the term rec.
Correct.
So that probably covers that.
But that was our suggestion and we just didn't want there to be confusion.
And then a question, you mentioned the city possibly running the concessions. Does that, do we need to put a, do we need to put something on this resolution that specifically states that so that there's no misunderstanding as to what?
That's going to come back at the next meeting.
Yeah, it is.
It will. It'll come back at the next meeting. We were trying to work that out before the, the March 4th date and since we're meeting on the 24th, we'll be able to do that then.
Yeah, that'll cover that.
We were trying not to muddy the waters.
All right, sounds good. All right, then my, my last question would be, it says they'll maintain the goals and equipment with documented expenses and receipts. Why are they going to hand the city with expenses and receipts for equipment that's used solely for the purposes of a private entity?
But it's not exclu, it's not exclusive.
Okay, that's good.
And they're turning them over.
So other people that use the facility?
And they're turning them, it says they become property of the city. They're turning them over to the city.
That's been kind of a gray area.
Yeah, it's kind of a...
But it's not exclusive use. I mean, that's one thing that, it's not exclusive contract.
They give them the right to go out and purchase whatever they want to purchase and stick out there and then hand it to the city.
Well, it does say with prior approval. It has to be prior approved. And if y'all want to change that approval to the rec board, I don't care. I just thought since I'm the one here in the day-to-day operations, that it would be with prior approval through my office.
I'd rather be you than rec board, but...
Okay, I mean, yeah.
And I think you, you want to avoid any kind of pay where they're putting up nets, taking nets down.
Right, yeah.
The city have to come out and put up their own nets.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, that's not going to happen, I don't believe, after a conversation that we've had, but again, they've already, you know, refurbished all the nets for this season and have not asked for that expenditure back.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't want to get, I don't want to make it too complicated, but I would, I would, my expectation would be that anybody really that makes changes to our fields...
Has to get approval.
Has to go through Pat to do that.
That's right.
I mean, that would be...
Anything that they would put on our fields or anything should have approval. We've been trying to be better about that. I know there have been instances in the past where, you know, just baseball or youth football would add something to our complexes, but when they do that, we have to be responsible for the maintenance, obviously.
Right.
And we have to ensure it and everything else, so I don't get hurt, safety. So we have been really, when we have those recreation summits, we really, you know, state that fact. If you're going to want to add anything to the parks, you have to come before us, the City Council will get approval for that and it has to be accepted prior to you starting to build anything.
When they, they make, they, they raise a lot of money by selling banners and signs out there.
You said they haven't, actually don't have them in a couple of years?
And there will be, there's no banners allowed on the fences.
That's what I...
It's part of the, yeah, it's part of the facility use agreement, I believe. We might want to just add that to the resolution, that signage cannot be placed on our fields unless, you know, approved, like tournament play, they, I think they put flags up, but there's no sign, there's no banners.
That's already in the sign ordinance.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, because that would almost entail exclusive use if we left them up.
Yeah, yeah.
Which I hate it, I really hate taking that revenue stream away from us.
They, they...
Wish they had a way to allow it.
Yeah, they...
So that they could use that as a revenue stream.
This league in particular does not, this league does not use them anyway, Councilman Burrell. They only, they've been using those kind of wavy flags with the sponsor's name on it that they put up during tournaments and that's it. They're taking down otherwise.
Any other questions, Council? The only other thing, Jessica, you were mentioning, did you have the item to walk on? Do we have a copy of that resolution? And we've already discussed this during the work session, but for your sake, Councilman Burrell, we'll go ahead and read this one as well, just so you have a chance. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, all right. And so this item to be walked on would be resolution be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that the City Council approves the use of multiple classrooms at the K-1 Center as well as North Beach Park requested by Jesus Revolution LLC for the filming of Jesus Revolution during the week of May 7 through 12. Was it May or was it March?
It should be March, March.
So March 7 through 12. The resolution says May, but we'll change that.
Are we charging them?
March 7 through 12.
They will be filming out of, they've already filled out a film permit, and so they will be paying for the film permit.
Yeah.
We charged for the Pecan Avenue building when we had some filming done in there.
They, well, they use that for storage. They use that as a storage facility for an extended period of time.
I think the film department doesn't establish fees as well?
For usage?
I know they have to do a, they have to do a, what, a $5,000 check?
Mm-hmm, they have to, they, well, they do. They have to write a, a check and then they also have their security deposit, which is how we come back on them if, if things are not taken care of.
Yeah.
All right, so during the week of March 7 through 12, entry to the K-1 Center will be allowed beginning February 21st for cleanup and set dressing. So basically, they just have two spots they want to film. Said they would return it to, prior to filming status and that they would probably only need, I think, the location on North Beach for one day and I think they said about the same for K-1 Center.
Yeah, it sounded like filming and from, from everything that we've received from them and they've told us is filming for each one of those would be for one day only.
All right. Any questions, Council?
I guess I'm worried about the precedent without charging on everybody that comes in here that wants to use a city facility. Every time they want to use it, is it, is it free? I'd ask them.
At that now because I think the way that was, it's been so long since I've dealt with one of these, but I think in the past, the way we dealt with that was if they were going to use a park, they had to pay the park rental fee, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe that's correct. And...
And I think that, I thought that was in the ordinance. That's what I was just reading through to look at.
You can always impose that on them, obviously. The Pecan, Pecan did set a precedent for, because we rented out a portion of that building. I believe it was maybe 1,500 square feet for them to utilize as storage. So that is where that lease came from for that. I think they maybe used it for three months.
It started off filming and then they leased the space to, I don't know, both. They did a lot of filming in there, too.
Well, it seems like they would probably need to do the park rental and then the K-1 Center is just in there vacant, I mean...
It does say, there, there are charges associated with use of certain, certain city facilities where set fees are established, production companies are charged the same fee, so it would be a, there's a...
Park rental.
Park rental, park rental fee for that, so, yeah.
But not the K-1 Center.
Not the K-1 Center.
I wouldn't, I don't...
And they said four hours in there? I think it made some setup time.
I believe that's correct, yeah.
I'm just, you know, there's going to take people to go let them in, let them out. It's going to take resources. I mean, it's going to cost the city some money. I, I worry, I just worry about the precedent, just to stop anybody from asking to use any place in town for free.
And what is the application fee? Is it $1,000?
I think it's, it's either 1,500 or maybe higher than that.
So they do pay that, they do pay that fee.
That's a non-reimbursable.
It's a non-reimbursable fee.
And their security deposit is 5,000.
That's back on...
Yeah, and, yeah, and their security deposit is 5,000.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
All right, y'all, if everyone's good, let's take a 10-minute break and we will be back.
Hey, hey, Council of Conyers, I did have a, I promised Cory, when I did not know that something was going to come up today, that I would make a couple announcements